If it is your intention to speak tonight during our meeting, will you please sign the book for audience participation? You'll have two minutes. I noticed your shirt was on to look extra stylish. It's got a little extra stylish. All right, let's prepare ourselves for the Board of Alderman Meeting for July 12, 2022. We're calling this meeting to order, and our invocation tonight will be done by the Reverend Cornell Muse of Price Chapel Church of God in Christ in Taylor, Texas, and his newly-elected pastor here at the Greater New Calvary Church of God in Christ. We welcome you tonight. Will you come to the podium, please, and lead us in our invocation?
Dear heavenly Father, in the name of Jesus, we ask you now to look upon the people now. Lord, as we even in, we ask you to invoke your presence in this place right now, as these men and women become together to make decisions, you said in your word, and all that ways to acknowledge, and you shall direct thy path. Lord, we just want to thank you now for your goodness, your mercy, and your grace. Let us be with one accord on here tonight. We just thank you right now. God, we ask you to bless the leaders here. We give you praise, and we give you glory. In Jesus' precious name we pray. Thank God. Amen.
Will you please remain standing for our pledge of allegiance? Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much. Our new donor for the evening is none other than our city attorney, Attorney Michael Frye, who will now do our roll call, and we're careful to remember our city clerk as she's away on tonight. Arvin?
Here.
Smith? Lindsey?
Here.
Bell?
Here.
Askew?
Here.
McCoy?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
McCoy? Moore? President? McDonald?
Here.
And the mayor?
Present.
You have a floor, Mr. Mayor? Thank you. Is there a motion concerning the approval of our minutes from our regularly-scheduled meeting on June 14, 2022?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Those in favor use the voting sign as "aye." Those opposed use the voting sign as "nay." Ayes have it on item E for the acceptance of our financial report for June of 2022. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. It's been moved and properly seconded. Those in favor use the voting sign as "aye." Those opposed use the voting sign as "nay." Ayes have it on the financial report. Yes.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, to the council, just want to make a correction to the agenda on tonight. I think we need to amend it. Uh, our invocation once again is done by the Reverend Cornell Muse, Pastor Price Chapel of Church of God in Christ in Taylor, Arkansas, instead of Taylor, Texas. So, he's trying to make that correction.
Thank you. Uh, we're ready now for audience participation. When your name is called by Attorney Frye, you'll be asked to approach the mic. You don't, you won't have to adjust the mic. The mic is used for recording and not necessarily for amplification. And so, if you will, when you come to the mic, please state your name, your physical address, and you have two minutes to make your statement at that time. Ed Winters?
Good evening. Ed Winters, 1141 Woodside Drive. I have a few things. Did we say two minutes now? I thought it was three. Two? Okay, I'll talk quick. I have a few things to say. First off, I want to thank Kevin and his department for cutting the shrubbery back in Pine Hill subdivision. It was really a problem, and it's been resolved. However, in doing so, the street sign on the corner of Woodside and Fauvray was knocked down, and then people would like that put back on, fixed. They'd also like to know what the status is of fixing the streetlights. We still have streetlights out that I addressed at least four months ago, and they have not been repaired. I just hope somebody can get back with us. There's two ordinances I want to ask about. You have resolution declaring dilapidated structures. One is only two blocks from here. There's a dilapidated structure up on North Adams across from Williams Bureau Home. The roof is falling in, and it's been in that condition for over a year. Will that ever be considered a dilapidated structure? The second question I have has to do with the salary increases. Is it ever publicized as to who those salary increases affect? The employees, elected officials, our police and firefighters? I mean, all we see is an ordinance. We don't see who it affects. And that's all I have to say. I get to talk fast when I need to.
Yes, sir.
I could, I just say briefly. So, the names are not made public. It's just done by mouth. It's not including uniformed officers, any fireman or police officer, and it's not including any elected officials.
Or a reason why not?
But that's up to them to answer. I mean, when they get that resolution, they can establish that. I was just trying to get a brief explanation, I guess. He was not elected official, and it's not certified at all.
And I'll adjust some of the things that you brought up later. I was going to wait on that. Yes. Mary Armstrong?
My name is Mary Armstrong, and I live in 905 Bradley Ferry Road. And I am here tonight to address the matter with my daughter. Y'all are not taking it serious. She just like Richard Kimball running for her life when something could be done by the person that's running after her. She done lost by fifteen pounds running. Half the time she stay at my house because she scared to stay at home. He been messing with her ever since March. And on June the, on May the 4th, they signed papers for restraining order. On June the 17th, the guy jumped on her and her daughter, bust her lip. My granddaughter had a knot upside her head. And nothing was done until she shot him, and then they locked her up. But he done ran over car to get to her, trying to kill her. And the papers were signed May the 4th for restraining order. Michael Frye didn't sign the papers to June the 21st. The papers was laying on his desk. Then on June the 28th, she was at a friend's house, and he went there with his pistol to kill her. Said he loved her, but he gonna kill her. This is a fatal attraction. She wants nothing else to do with him, and he cannot stand it. And something needs to be done. She shouldn't have to be running the way she running. She done lost fifteen pounds running. And then when they locked him up, because he was gonna kill her, when they let him out of jail, the deputy, a detective, called her and told her that they done let him out of jail, and if you got somewhere you can go, you might need to go stay with somebody. Because y'all done had two pistol plate. But the restraining order, it still wouldn't have stopped him, but at least he done got him. Then while he was in jail, we don't know if he been served yet. Something needs to be done. This is a serious matter. She running like Richard Kimball, and she shouldn't have to run. She shouldn't have to leave her house. And the police been piled out there so entertaining. And they just go and do nothing. I was there when they, when he went, he emptied her storage building one night, and I was there when the police came, and the only thing the police said was the storage building was ranshacked. He took everything out of storage building, all but a junky. It was ran, it wasn't ranshacked, it was emptied. Something needs to be done. Because I do not want my daughter in jail, and I don't want her dead. But uh, this is a serious matter, and ain't nobody taking it serious.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mr.
Something needs to be done.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Without disclosing names, I would say charges have been filed, one in felony, and one in circuit court, and one in district court, and those charges will be in, uh, county and circuit court.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. All right. Holly Seals?
Name is Holly Freeman Seals. I live at 513 Warner Street, Camden, Arkansas. My issue is, on July the 1st, I was sideswiped. Police came out. He didn't come to me. He went and talked to the white guy and didn't want me to hear it. When I went to stand to hear what he was saying, he told me to go get back in my car. If I didn't get in my car, he was gonna lock me up. I asked him, "What you gonna do, shoot me?" I said, "'Cause I see what you are. You are a redneck, white, you-know-what. And the only way you gonna lock me up, you gonna have to shoot me, knock me down. You gonna put your knee on my neck?" Okay. He wrote a statement. He did not get my side. The guy, I'm on the right, the guy come from the left, sideswiped me. Then he got my insurance. He got State Farm. My insurance is with Farm Bureau. That go to show, I don't know who all you are hiring here, but the police that you are hiring, they are not. They don't need to be policing. I tried to talk to the mayor. I tried to talk to the chief. Ain't nobody listening. But I tell you what, something got to be done. I don't know what kind of game they running in Camden, but if I have to get that name from up here, all y'all gonna be in trouble. Because I am not gonna be told seven, eight years old to go sit in my car and wait till you come and talk to me. I am not a child. And you not gonna disrespect me like that. I don't know who he think he is. I don't know where he come from, but you better find out. He dealing with the wrong black one.
Gregory C. Nell?
I'm not sure if I'm going to follow him or not. Greg Nell's, uh, address 307 Lakeside, New Orleans. Also shows the pastor, director of the church, and some other civic organizations. Tonight, I just came to give commendations to the Kevin Franklin and to Ben Woody for the hard work that we've seen done to make sure that the pool is able to be open. So, I think they deserve that. Oftentimes, we come and complain, but I want to come and give them credit, as well as the fire department and all the workers of the city. I have a grandson that is employed with the city, and he loves his job. You don't know what that does for me and my wife. He loves his job. He doesn't come by the house as much to ask for money anymore. He loves his job. So, I want to thank you all for what you do.
All right, yes, sir. The mayor's report, you know. All right. Well, I wanted to start by just giving an update of our whereabouts on June the 2nd and 3rd. I met with the Winter Rockefeller Group and the ABMA, of which our service president was awarded $300,000 to help us with the watershed program that we have going on here in the city of Camden. We have nineteen projects that were awarded $95.9 million. Two of those watersheds will be $11 million right here in Camden. Um, and then we've had several vacation Bible schools on this, during this month, that's been very helpful. I was able to attend the Camden North Coalition 6 through 8, the Municipal League. Well, the 88th Annual Convention was the 15th through the 17th. This time, we were able to sit through the whole thing without an interruption. Last time, we had some issues that we had to come back for. Uh, on the 17th, there was a banquet for the Sanders family that we attended, and representing the city, welcoming them. The 19th, of course, was Father's Day, June, and Juneteenth, and on the 20th, our city, we had a city holiday. We had a local watershed meeting here on the 21st, and of course, again, that is going to be something that's really going to benefit us in the area of finding answers to flooding in and around, not only our city, but even the whole county, because those watersheds impact more than us. Uh, Mr. Wooton has been working on another grant with parks and tourism, and so, there was a meeting on the 28th there at Sandy Beach, and we're working diligently, looking for ways to fix that particular, some of the issues that are going on there. And then, of course, there was a telecom uh, technology call that we were on. On the 29th, we had lunch with the Secretary of Labor, Mark Welsh, at the Clinton Library in Little Rock, and he seems to have quite a passion, uh, because he also has served as a mayor before, so he understands some of the, uh, some of the local needs. And I just, we just left on the 2nd. We were at the Ministerial Alliance, the Washita County Ministerial Alliance, and I was so happy that, uh, Enforcer Wooton, as well as Director Franklin, were able to attend, and they, uh, recently just spoke for us there. Um, and, uh, CPD, I forgot to mention that on the 3rd, uh, Camden Police Department was at Love and Joy Church. I don't know how to pronounce it in Spanish, but we were there with that congregation on that particular Sunday, dealing with some very specific issues to the Hispanic community. And on the 6th, I was with the Swap D Board of Directors, and also on yesterday, we met with Blake Harold, and they're going to come next month, the Swap D will be here next month, to speak with us about flood mitigation also. And we had some recent, most recent issues, uh, there, and so they were able to help us to correct some of that. And on yesterday, uh, there was a voter rights forum from which, at First Baptist Church in Eldorado, our voca grant for our police department comes to there. Last year, they gave us even extra money during COVID to help to relieve some of the issues that people, uh, deal with, uh, as far as domestic abuse. And this morning, at 8:30, we were at Lockheed Martin for their first, uh, M2782, uh, unveiling, and so we were very happy about that. There were two things that I was asked to address, uh, and I want to say a couple of things. One of the issues that's before us right now is, uh, some people were saying that they were concerned about having access to City Hall. And what happens now when you come to the door, uh, someone, it has the phone numbers up there for you to call to set up meetings. The actual sign that asks you to go through protocols was there before I became mayor, and also that was, uh, they recognized a need to secure the building before I became mayor, and the doors were already in the works. They just had not been put up. So, we put the doors up, uh, for a safety reason. There were people who came in who were, uh, I think, uh, some people complained about people coming in, drinking coffee all day, and hanging out in the building, and some other things like that. And most of that, we've been able to handle. But we, you do have access. When you make those calls, whoever you need to see will be made available, uh, to you. As of right now, I couldn't find the buildings where people were saying that taxpayers just had total access. Uh, and I know at the school, you rang in. I know at the, uh, at the courthouse, which was an example that I was given, I know there are some guns in the courthouse too. So, I, I, I don't, I couldn't find all of the, uh, examples that people were saying, well, you can walk in any building and just have your way. So, if you don't mind, I would still like to keep with the process of making the call, and whoever you need, when you, if you come to the door, if I'm in, I'll meet with you. If whoever you need is here, they'll meet with you without a call, but we still need to keep the doors up for now. There's a lot going on, not just in Camden, but around the world. I want to suggest, I want to also let you know, great things are happening here in Camden. We've been able to secure quite a few grants, and I want you to think that that's, uh, just free money. It's some work that goes into it, but many of you are taxpayers, et cetera, understand that some of those monies that come back to us, the turnbacks, et cetera. And so, I wanted to, uh, say to you that, uh, Mr. Wooton has been working really well for us with Swap D to help us to do that. One of the other issues that we've been dealing with, and I have been mentioning on our, on our weekly broadcast, is that all of the businesses, uh, need to come through City Hall. If you come and you get water, the water company will send you back to, uh, Mr. Wooton. We've had businesses that have opened without, uh, without, uh, business license. They try to open without business occupancy licenses and things like that. And it's important that all of us are following the same rules. These are not made up rules by the new mayor. They're actually rules that help protect people in our community. So, it's not, it's not a me thing. It's a we thing. And if buildings are going to be safe, then they need, the fire department does need to approve how many people can be inside your building at one time. And so, we've been dealing with that, and I, I do want to apologize for the businesses that we've asked to delay opening, but we need to be on, the city needs to be on the front end of your planning, uh, for some of that, so that we can make sure that you're meeting those codes and follow, everybody's following the same rules. Earlier, one of our citizens was concerned, or is concerned about the lights. I do want to say, we pay the same price for those lights, whether they work or not, but we're at the mercy of energy to come to us and to fix those lights. And I think we have a list right now of 200 or more lights that are out in the city that we too are waiting on them to fix, because we pay for them, whether they're on or off, but we cannot change out the lights. So, we have, we have made those requests. When you do them, if you don't do them right, when they come through us, we make it right. So, we know they're done correctly, and so it's not, the onus is on them. We can keep lighting fire under them, because we do make those complaints and make those calls. But we have to pay for those lights, whether they're on or not, so we are, we are doing everything we can to get them to go on and turn them on, because that bill keeps occurring. But we don't have the, we can't do that, uh, legally. We can't go up there and change out those bulbs. And so, I apologize for the inconvenience that that causes, especially, uh, in these, uh, summer months when, um, when it does get dark. I understand that. And we are working on some of the issues that have been brought before us tonight. I just want to ask that, uh, as you've called them out, we're getting the opportunity to look at these things, and they shouldn't be on the agenda. They shouldn't come up again. Some of those things that are in courts, we have to wait on the court, and so, we don't, we don't get to make all those decisions. But the things that are within our purview, we'll make sure that we're doing whatever we can to affect those, uh, those changes. So, we did hear your, uh, we did hear you on tonight, and thank you so much. That is the mayor's report for this. You lie to me. James Nixon is going to come with our OPEAD, with an OPEAD presentation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for allowing me tonight to speak for a moment. I'm James Nixon. I'm with, uh, OPEAD, Washita Partnership for Economic Development, and I am the treasurer. Uh, there is a resolution that you have before you tonight, so I thought it would be good for this presentation to go there, go tonight. Also, I had some questions by a couple of aldermen that asked some questions about prospects, asked questions about funding, so I put together a PowerPoint slide that answered these questions, and I wanted to use that tonight. I put it in report form that you have in front of you. I'll move very quickly through this. We always talk about economic development, that we got prospects, and it's always nice to have it, and it's something we always say. One of the questions come up is, is what's the status? We hear about this prospect or that prospect, but what's, what's the status? Is it really ever gonna happen? Reason why some of this comes up, if you look at page two, uh, this is one of these unusual ones in that we actually get to tell you the name of the company that we're working with. In 2017, Highland Pellet from Pine Bluff, they approached OPEAD about the desire to locate, and I, uh, they actually have bought property just outside of Stevens. But since 2017, you're scratching your head going, "Is it really gonna happen? Is this just something that we put in here?" You know, so I want to give you a little bit of an update. Uh, every prospect that we're working with right now is in the timber manufacturing business, such as
But we're at the mercy of energy to come to us and to fix those lights. And I think we have a list right now of two hundred or more lights that are out in the city that we too are waiting on them to fix because we pay for them, whether they're on or off, but we cannot change out the lights. So we have, we have made those requests. When you do them, if you don't do them right, when they come through us, we make it right. So we know they're done correctly. And so it's not, the onus is on them, we can keep lighting fire under them because we do make those complaints and make those calls. But we have to pay for those lights, whether they're on or not, so we are, we are doing everything we can to get them to go on and turn them on because that bill keeps occurring. But we don't have the, we can't do that, uh, legally, we can't go up there and change out those bulbs. And so I apologize for the inconvenience that that causes, especially, uh, in these, uh, so- summer months when, um, it, when, when it does get dark, I understand that. And we are working on some of the issues that have been brought before us tonight. I just want to ask that, uh, as you've called them out, we're getting an opportunity to look at these things and they shouldn't be on the agenda, they shouldn't come up again. Some of those things that are in courts, we have to wait on the court. And so we don't, we don't get to make all those decisions. But the things that are within our purview, we'll make sure that we're doing whatever we can to affect those, uh, those changes. So we did hear your, uh, we did hear you on tonight and thank you so much. That is the mayor's report for this. You lie to me. James Nixon is going to come with our OPED, with an OPED presentation.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me tonight to speak for a moment. I'm James Nixon, I'm with, uh, OPED, Washington Partnership for Economic Development, and I am the treasurer. Uh, there is a resolution that you have before you tonight, so I thought it would be good for this presentation to go there, go tonight. Also, I had some questions by a couple of aldermen that asked some questions about prospects, asked questions about funding, so I put together a PowerPoint slide that answered these questions and I wanted to use that tonight. I put it in a report form that you have in front of you. I'll move very quickly through this. We always talk about economic development, that we got prospects, and it's always nice to have it and it's something we always say. One of the questions come up is, is what's the status? We, we hear about this prospect or that prospect, but what's, what's the status? Is it really ever going to happen? Reason why some of this comes up, if you look at page two, uh, this is one of these unusual ones in that we actually get to tell you the name of the company that we're working with. In, in twenty seventeen, Highland Pellet from Pine Bluff, they approached OPED about the desire to locate and I, uh, they actually have bought property just outside of Stevens. But since twenty seventeen, you're scratching your head going, is it really going to happen? Is this just something that we put in here? You know, so I want to give you a little bit of an update. Uh, every prospect that we're working with right now is in the timber manufacturing business such as Highland Pellet. The company has estimated a two million, a two hundred million dollar capital investment and the company is projecting to hire over three hundred employees. One of the great things when I started researching for this presentation, I went to Highland Pellet website. And when I went there, what I found was in this, uh, slide here that you see where it says Highland and it has Stevens Plant, that comes from their actual website. So that is a positive thing. That means that they're not just talking about it, they've actually got it on their website. While I was researching for this, I was talking to James Lee one day and we were talking about Highland Pellet. Interesting enough, he had just had a phone call with an executive who was in Europe working on contracts for Highland Pellet, uh, in Stevens. A week after that, James Lee calls me and says that, I believe it was six or eight executives from Highland Pellet flew in out here and asked James to carry them to the site to take a tour and drive around. All of that is very positive. This is one of these projects that OPED is very strongly optimistic that this is going to become a reality. We never know what's going to be reality until it's actually built, but there is continual positive, uh, feedback from this company. I can also tell you that Highland Pellet has recently been approached and asked if they would consider selling their site. There was another project, there was a prospect that had talked to them about that and they said, no way. They said they're excited about this spot, uh, they've already purchased it. And so it's just going to take, uh, time to develop. Two so- two thousand seventeen till now is a long time, but it's, it's not in light of a project this big. So that's Highland Pellet, great things going on with that. The next group that we have is, uh, a group that we can't identify yet, but we call them Project Clean. They came to OPED in twenty eighteen, had a couple of short conversations and then they disappeared. But we didn't know that they were working behind the scenes. They have approached us late twenty twenty, early twenty twenty-one and, um, they've actually, uh, have identified some land. They've actually, uh, purchased an, uh, an option agreement, uh, where they've paid money for an option to purchase that land. And that option agreement ran out and they paid that option agreement again, uh, because not everything is quite in place. They're continuing to have positive conversation with James Lee. Uh, and we expect, again, just like Highland Pellet, right now, the information that's been given, this is a very good sign. It's just something that is, again, it's a big project and so it's just taking time to develop. But both of these are very much, they're very active and James Lee probably within the last, I'm going to say within the last ten days, has spoken with each one of these companies at least one time. So that's good news. Uh, there is another one called Project Arch, again, another timber manufacturer. This one approached OPED in twenty twenty-two, this year. This company, um, is, uh, looking at land, uh, they're looking at hiring about a hundred employees. But this is one of these, uh, projects that it's in its infancy stage. And so this is one that I can tell you right now, we don't hold out a lot for this prospect right now, it's just too early. Um, they are still having conversations, but it is just too early to tell right now, but they are out there. I'll also tell you that did not make this report, there is very recently, another prospect that is timber related, a manufacturer. Um, too early to say anything about them, but they, uh, they're moving pretty fast and I'm very excited to hear what's going on with this company. They've got some things, uh, some, some questions they need answered. And I've seen James Lee have to jump through hoops, but they're really putting through it. Uh, they want some answers done quickly. Um, y'all may remember that, um, the governor has made a statement that if you want to do business in Arkansas, it's easier to do business here than another state. This company has reached out to James Lee and they want to test that and I thought that was pretty cool. So they're asking some things of James Lee and, uh, James Lee has told them, he said, we're going to show you how easy it is to do business in Arkansas. So we hold out for that. Also, there is a, there is a timber, uh, there is another timber manufacturer that is actually, um, going to do business. They're opening up an older, uh, uh, business that was here, they closed, they're going to reopen that business, going to hire about sixty employees. Um, OPED, uh, James Lee got involved in that on the backend instead of the frontend and has been just doing a little bit with that. He's been in touch with the, uh, the powers that be with that company. And he's doing a little bit there with them, but still, um, not as involved as with some of these others, but still sixty jobs and, and those are coming. So, uh, those sixty jobs we, uh, very much, uh, very well received for our, for our community, for our county, for our city. Also, uh, retail prospects, um, I stand up here, James, please stand up here. We're always going to tell you that we have, uh, that we have retail prospects. Uh, we always got, there's always two out there. And the, uh, the challenge with retail prospects is, is it, it's got to do with financing, location and the employee base. And James Lee will work very hard, he'll get very close and something happens. They will find the perfect location and then for some reason that deal falls through. Or they, uh, they have everything going and then their finance falls through. So he is currently working with two prospects, but, and restaurant prospects, but until that becomes a reality, we don't know where that will land. So, um, that kind of gives you a quick rundown of the prospects that we are working on right now, the names of them and, and the status of where they're at. So we're very excited, um, about what we see here and we hope, um, within the next, you know, hopefully by the end of this year, we'll see some fruit from a couple of these prospects, so. Uh, also, I wanted to switch gears just a moment. And on page six, I want to talk for a minute about OPED annual operations and talk about, um, continuous funding. Funding, because I am the treasurer, uh, and just so y'all know, besides my job, I am a Del Carnegie, uh, Del Carnegie, listen, I've graduated Del Carnegie, I've also graduated Dave Ramsey. So I run in my own family, I run a zero budget every month, meaning I try to tell every dollar where to go. Sometimes it tells me where it wants to go, but I, but I make an attempt in my home. So, uh, budget is very important. When I became treasurer, one of the things I looked at was is how we were funding OPED. And there is not a good, there was not a good, uh, funding source. Originally, what happened when I came on the board was, is that we need about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to operate OPED annually. And what would happen was is that we would come before the city council and we would get that money and that money would come from the economic development funds with the city. Uh, money that was put there for an old economic tax that has expired. And in twenty eighteen, as I looked at it, I had made, I had talked to some people and I said, if we don't do something to change the way we are funding OPED, that account will be depleted in three years. That means by twenty twenty-one, um, there would be no funding left. So in twenty eighteen, we began to form, uh, OPED formed a, uh, funding committee and began to look for ways to try to better fund OPED and we're looking for continuous funding. One of the things also that, uh, the Arkansas Economic Development Commission in Little Rock, one of the things that they're encouraging economic developments to groups to do is they're encouraging them to find continuous funding. And they're setting up, uh, how you get prospects and how people, how they, who they send to you. Some of it is tied to different things and one of them is continuous funding. So it's important for us to try to figure that out. Um, so in twenty nineteen, based on what we learned in twenty eighteen, um, I, I worked with the county and I worked with the city. And so, uh, in twenty nineteen, Washington County Court, they approved a hundred thousand dollars from the county's operating fund. And in that same year, the city approved fifty thousand dollars from the city's operating fund. That money coming from the county and the city, that was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that did not have to come out of that economic development funds with the city. So we, that was the beginning for us to slow down the drawdown on that money. Uh, since then, uh, Washington County Court has approved a hundred thousand dollars annually. So to date, the Washington County Court has, um, they have, uh, given four hundred thousand dollars to OPED. So that's four hundred thousand dollars that did not have to come out of that economic development. So again, that was, um, we're beginning to get there on future funding. Um, in early twenty twenty-one, OPED Executive Committee, we met and continuous funding for OPED came up. In the discussions back and forth, we had the county judge and the mayor there as part of the executive committee. And the county judge actually had the idea and the mayor and him discussed that if the county put in a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars from operations and if the city would put in a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars from operations, then we could essentially begin to have a continuous funding for OPED. That would allow us to operate annually for two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and that would leave eighty-five thousand dollars left over for incentives that we may have to pay out throughout the year. So, um, that was discussed back and forth. And in the county's, um, in Washington County's twenty twenty-two budget, they approved annual, uh, a hundred thousand dollars to be given to OPED and they also approved an additional fifty-five thousand. And that fifty-five thousand, they put a contingency on there, uh, continued upon the city of Camden, given approval for a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. That resolution that you have before you tonight, that resolution is tied to this right here. So if you approve the resolution tonight for OPED, then what will happen is, once we get that approval, we will be able to turn around and send an invoice to the county and ask them for that fifty-five thousand dollars that they have, um, out there for us. So we're excited and we hope that, uh, you will consider that resolution because that will take care of us and we won't have to, uh, we will take care of, from the money that we get tonight from the city and that resolution and from the county, we'll take care of any pending, uh, I just went completely blank, I apologize, uh, any incentives that we have to pay out this year, we'll be able to pay that out of the money that we'll get between y'all and the county. So now, if you look at the very last slide, I know some of you are trying to figure out and follow all of this. Here's what I want to show you and this is our, this is what I use as OPED's report card, okay? How OPED is doing and not just, one of the report cards is, is what kind of prospects are we getting? But also the other part is, is this right here. And this slide right here, the money that is with the city, the economic development funds with the, with the city, any one of y'all can talk to the treasurer and they can tell you how much that is. And let's just say that a prospect comes in here and, and says they want to do something. That that you see, that is a gross, that's not the net. There are some incentives that must go against that. But if you look down there at the balance, the net balance of this account, we are still, we're in a very good place financially with OPED and notice that this money has not been depleted. Um, so we have done a very good job of managing this, slowing down the drain of these funds. And we have money available for future incentives that may happen for the city and for the county, so. I hope that added clarity and not confusion. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to try and answer them.
I got a couple. Mr. Nixon, uh, first and foremost, um, good presentation. Um, I want to ask you about the, uh, the Highland Stevens, uh, plant. And you said that's been going on since twenty seventeen, that's five years. I mean, are they, they moving dirt? Are they, I mean, you said it's real promising. I talked to a prospect today and, and I'll use him in light of Highland. When, when you were in, making an investment in building a facility such as Highland Pellet, I talked to a, a company today that, uh, has, uh, three years ago, they built, they, they invested eighty million dollars and built a facility and they did not have one contract. They rolled the dice and they built it. Now they've gotten the contracts and they're doing very well. That is one way to do it. Now this company is fixing to do it again. This time, they're not going to invest the money until they go out and they get their contracts. They said they did it, they rolled the dice, it worked out well and they were very profitable. Now, this particular go around, they're going to back up and get the contracts. And that's what Highland Pellet's doing right now, number one, is they're, they want to go out and see what kind of contracts that they can get in Europe first, make sure they got the contract before they do it. The other thing is, is that I can tell you that with Highland Pellet, um, and with another prospect that I'm working with, um, they have to have a substation built at that site in Stevens. And so to gauge that, right now, to build a substation takes anywhere from eighteen to twenty-eight months to build. So they're in the talks about that right now, but that'll just tell you that's how long. Um, it used to be maybe twelve, fourteen months, but because of where everything is now, and that'll tell you how long. Um, so when we talk about Highland Pellet, um, actually doing something on that site, they can't do it till they get that substation. So we could be a couple of years out from that.
Yeah, and, and, and the reason I asked, um, you know, this, this mill has come up and, uh, but nobody's seeing any movement. And, you know, the, the, the conversation been going on for five years. And I know it used to be an old mill down there, old pep, um, uh, stock mill or something. But, you know, I mean, the people are not seeing anything, not saying that it's not happening. But, you know, we're not seeing anything.
And, and I agree totally. And that's why I thought it was very encouraging while I was doing my research for this, to know that they're bringing an executive in for a site visit. They're, James is calling and they're in Europe, they're working on contracts. That's all, that's great news. You know, so it lets us know, it's not a guarantee that not everything's done yet, but it lets you know they're working on their environmental permitting right now and all that stuff. So unfortunately, when you get this size, it just takes a long time to get some of these things to come to fruition and, uh.
Also, um, on, um, page five, uh, for us to retail prospects, you say you got two active, um, prospects looking to locate here in Camden and unlike everybody else. I mean, you got very few restaurants to select from. And a lot of the city money is going down the road. Eldorado, Black and Old Hill and every time you look around, turn around, every little spot they get, something is coming up. And, you know, um, like I said, I'm like everybody else, you know, I mean, what is, what kind of timeline are we looking at? Because, I mean, we, we do have buildings, we do have land where they can build and just like these lumber companies, uh, got a pers- uh, projected or perspective of current of three hundred people, a hundred people, well, if you get a restaurant in here, you know, I'm pretty sure, you know, they can, probably have people as well, but, you know.
I'll need to chime in if you don't mind.
You go right ahead.
One of the most recent complaints that we, that we're receiving as a city is that there are too many chiefs. That there's some people who are calling these businesses, uh, from posts that they're reading and they're harassing some of those retailers and restaurants. They want to deal with one or, with one entity that represents the city. They don't want to deal with five individuals. And that's the most recent call that, uh, that is, that's an issue. That we have people who we're paying to do this and we can't harass or you're not going to make a person come here that's not ready yet. And then they, they want to see locations, they want to work with, with a cer- with certain entities, they want to work with people that are going to help them get the job done. So that's the complaint that we just recently received. Now, continue.
I just, I, I've been involved in some of these retail things and, and it's the most, it's the most frustrating. I'll deal with the Highland Pellet that's been in two thousand seventeen. Then the, the win at one of these meetings and things be positive, going to the next meeting and things are upside down and you're like, what happened? Okay, it just, I mean, again, it deals with location. All of a sudden they couldn't get the financing that they wanted, the mood's changed, whatever's happened, something's happened. So retail is just, in my time in economic development, it's always been a huge challenge. And it is in other communities as well. I was talking to one today, um, in a community around here, uh, there was three restaurants that was supposed to open up. And somebody sent me an email today and says, what have you heard? And I said, you know what, I'll find out. But right now they just disappeared off the radar. And I was in two economic meetings and these three companies was listed to come into a community. And I don't know where they are, but I told them, I said, I'll, I'll ask and see, but that's just what happens.
Are you, are you guys reaching or are you guys waiting for these prospective, uh, retailers or restaurants to reach out to you? Are you guys reaching out saying, hey, you know, we'd love for you guys to come to Camden, uh?
No, yes.
Bring your burger joint, your whatever to Camden.
Yes.
You guys are actually reaching out.
We, we've done some reaching out. It, it's really, I will tell you that the way it works is most of the time they're going to reach out to you. But there are some cases where we hear, or we'll get a real, really what happens with, with retail is and the real, the real estate people will call you. That's who you start with. And sometimes they won't even tell you who the company is and you got to deal with them. And maybe their interest is not Camden. So you never get anywhere, you never get to find out who it is. And that realtor, for whatever reason, they'd rather be in another location. And so you really never get anywhere and it's because of the realtor. You never got a chance to even actually get to them. So it can be complicated.
Uh, another to that, um, we had Mr. uh, Silliman to write a, I don't know, a template letter. And when he wrote the template letter, we literally had Ms. Brandy, one of our employees, to start sending those letters out on our letterhead. One of the issues that restaurants have, uh, they need to know that those restaurants can be supported, not just during holidays and weekends. And so they want to make sure they can make money all the time. So you, you have, we have a low population counties, many people are suffering from that. But we certainly, and so what we sold our community as was a reason. We talked about the, um, to, to make the numbers better. We talked about the golden triangle, that, that the people who live here, some of us work in Magnolia, some of us working in El Rey and in between, and some of those people work here too. So that was the way we were able to color our numbers, to make our numbers look more palatable. But we have a template letter that we've been sending out from our office and the calls that we've been making, trying to get companies, uh, to consider, uh, particularly restaurant. The letter that we have is for restaurant, not for retail or for industry, but to bring the restaurants in. And that was written by Mr. Silliman, who has the, who knows what to look for. We had a Buxton report done many years ago, it's probably time to redo something like that. But that report kind of told what kind of restaurants people wanted to come here and what we, uh, what we want to pay, when we eat there.
One last, excuse me, Marvin, if I got one more. Uh, your report card, page nine. Um, you, you got Lockheed Martin training and Lockheed Martin job creation. Now, I guess you all are responsible like for like the welding program at S A U Tech or?
What happens is, is that when there is a prospect, uh, A D C gets involved and A D says they're, they come up with a, uh, a set amount that they're going to give this prospect to locate and to do business in the state. And then what they do is they reach out to the community and they'll reach out to the economic development arm, which in our case is O P E D. And so they'll reach out to us and what O P E D does is O P E D, um, gives incentives based on training. Like we have a formula based on the number of employees they're going to have. And so we do everything based on training and we make sure that the training is done through S A U Tech in East Camden. So whatever dollars that we give for training, whenever, and we tell whatever the prospect is, we say it's not a guarantee, they've got to hire a certain number of employees. Uh, they've got to have employees, uh, retention for say eighteen, twenty-four months or whatever. And they've got certain, uh, benchmarks they have to meet. When they meet those benchmarks, then they can come to us and say, we've met our benchmarks, here they are. Now we would like our training dollars for, that we offer them for incentives. And again, those training dollars, we make sure they're given to S A U Tech in East Camden. So those dollars are spent in this area.
So that ties into the job creation, um, I guess I'm kind of getting that. So the people that Lockheed is hiring, they be done went through your training?
They went through their training and they have to retain them for a certain period of time. And then they come to us and say, we've created these jobs and, and these jobs were created for X amount of time. Now we would like to, and so they have to meet all those benchmarks and then they'll send us an invoice and then we pay that incentive.
So real quick, explain the job creation, the Lockheed job creation, what you got on your report card?
So in that particular case right there, again, that was a very large, uh, project where they were going to hire a large number of individuals. And so we, part of our, part of our incentive that we gave to them was this job creation. We said, okay, we'll give you these incentive dollars for job creation if you go hire X number of employees and you retain them for an X number of period of time. And so now that they're beginning to have some of those employees that have met those benchmarks, then they'll, they'll say, look, we've met our benchmarks for creation of employees. We've hired the people we said that we were going to hire. We didn't just hire them, but now they're staying and they've stayed this long. So now we want incentive dollars that you have told us you were going to get.
Okay, I, I, I get that. I'm just trying to see how to train it tied to the job creation, how that jive and melt together, but I'm, I'm good. Go ahead, Marvin.
Oh, I am, keep going. No, you're good, man.
First question is, I, I knew about the Pellets and, and the, is that a competitive group? You know, maybe producing the same product, uh, Stevens and, uh?
They're the same company, so they're not going to be, they're not going to be necessarily, they're not going to be competitive.
They're just in the same market.
It's in the same market, but what they want, that's why they got the contracts for Pine Bluff. Now they need to go get the contracts for the Stevens facility. I also know they're building a Highland Pellet in Mississippi.
Right.
So they're going to be also going out and getting contracts for that as well. So each site that they build, they want to make sure that they have the contracts that can sustain that operation in that area.
Just one other, uh, and I understand a little bit about, uh, I'm, I'm no guru in this. I just know that right now, for, but we're called shots on where they want to be. And the city's got to really compete, you know, whether it's tax deferred, the property, the land we're going to give them or whatever. That's just the way it is and it's not going to change right now in this market. Uh, as far as us, I, I was just concerned, what type of, are there any tax incentives or deferred tax incentive that we put on the table based on the conversations you have with the county, the city? You know, I mean, you understand what I'm saying, there's a few plates we got off.
There are, we don't do it here, but I know like for instance, um,
Arkansas?
They will do a pilot program, payment and all of taxes program. So some counties, say Calvin County will give, uh, they'll enter into a pilot program. Where we give incentive for training for Lockheed, um, they will, the county will enter into a pilot program and say, we're going to give you a discount on your taxes.
Right.
So, um, and, and that's an option we can go to at some point if, if that's never been done, then I know well on this side.
And, and, and I, I know we have a little disadvantage, everything depends on the taxes. The more in tax you got coming in, the more you can deal with these companies and say, I can give you this, I can do this for you. And, and, and I know you don't have a hard or easy job, but now, and, and, and I'm going to finish up. This is the first time I've seen this, you know, I've been sitting here a while and I really enjoy it. Because, and, and you know, you know me, I've been there and I've said, I've never seen anything that tells me what you're doing.
And that's exactly what, when I talked to a couple of the aldermen, they, they had the exact same conversation and that's why I put that together the way that I did. And, um, they said it was very beneficial, so I said, oh yeah, I think it'll help all of y'all. So that's why I did that. Now, I also want to tell you this, that in my research, when I was putting all of this together, one of the things that I was told by the, one of the aldermen was, is that O P E D coming before the city council twice a year is extremely confusing and can be a little bit frustrating. And so I, since I've been here, that's all I've ever done. In my research, what I found out was, is that there was a period of time where O P E D only came before the city council once a year. They would come one time and say, this is what we need for the year, do an annual report and then they would walk away. And my understanding to what I've talked into the alderman, um, and talking to some people that were a part of this years ago, it made it a much simpler process, it was less confusing. So I will tell y'all that starting in twenty twenty-three, we're going to have this figured out and we come once instead of twice. Okay, so that's also come out of this as well. So it's been a good exercise for me in understanding this process and I hope this report works for y'all.
Mr. Nixon is good, I tell you what, we don't see some of these, uh, committees or whatever, so pardon your forecoming. But again, just speaking on behalf of, I know, um, constituents that called me and talking about, you know, O P E D, you know, why we, why we don't have this restaurants, jobs, you know, this and that, you know? And, and the biggest thing I'm hearing, and again, this is good and we'll be able to talk this and explain it somewhat. But, um, it's like, you know, all we doing is just paying this out. We don't see anything, you know? They want to see some end results, not saying that you guys aren't doing anything.
I understand.
But you know, I mean, people, they want to, you know, be able to say, hey, you know, um, we got a new restaurant. You know, hey, we, this job is opening up, you know, um, it's about the end results.
So right now, your end result is sixty jobs coming to Camden. Okay, and O P E D played microphone and I don't sit here and tell you that O P E D is the reason they're doing this, okay? I told you, O P E D came later on the scene, but there was a place where James Lee was needed and he plugged himself in. So we, we did play a part in those sixty jobs. So as you sell this and what O P E D's doing, we've got sixty jobs here and so that is good. And, um, we'll continue to turn over every rock that we can. Um, part again, looking at that last page, will tell you that I think we're being very responsible with the funds that we have. And we're, I really, I really think we're close to doing something good.
Thank you so much.
Thank y'all.
I'll say again that a part of that energy that we debate on, uh, on the internet really counts. We do have, uh, one of the businesses that we have, uh, is Camden, Camden Timbers, who we were able to incentivize with two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars if they will bring in forty-five workers for two years. And they have promised to pay, including benefits, at thirty-eight dollars an hour, and including the benefits. But that's, but that's the average pay is thirty-eight dollars. And so the grant for that, they don't get that if they don't, they don't get the two hundred and forty-eight thousand incentivized unless they meet that goal. And so the, uh, and be very mindful, and I'll, I'll say this in this, in this room, but be very mindful that a lot of the people who are doing some of that speech, some of that negative hate speech against our city, don't live here. So don't respond to that because people read the internet. You don't have to go to a city to go to a city. You can go on internet and read what people are saying. A lot of those people are agitated, they don't live here. Don't respond to it and it's difficult not to, to try your best not to respond to, uh, that negativity because people are reading that about our city. We do have jobs, we do have prospects, there is money moving in the city. Dope dealers don't stay in a city where there's no money, it's a money here. Uh, is there any old business before our council? I see none. Our new business begins with resolution number?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, point of order, I'd like to amend tonight's agenda and add resolution forty-eight twenty-two.
Motion to amend the agenda to include resolution number forty-eight twenty-two, thank you, I'm sorry. Is there a second?
Yes.
It's been moved properly, seconded and discussion about resolution, resolution forty-eight twenty-two being added, amended, the agenda being amended to add resolution forty-eight twenty-two. Those in favor, this vote is on aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, this vote is on a nay. Ayes have it. Now we're ready for our new business, resolution number forty-one twenty-two. I'm trying to find, uh, introduced by the mayor.
Uh, resolution number forty-one dash twenty-two, a resolution to declare the dilapidated structure located at five thirty, Harrison Street, to remedy the public nuisance and to order the removal of same pursuant to the procedure outlined in ordinance number fourteen eighty-four.
That motion to approve, seconded?
It's been moved and properly seconded. So, uh, are ready for discussion on resolution number forty-one twenty-two? Those in favor, this vote is on aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, this vote is on a nay. All right? So now, the resolution number forty-two twenty-two introduced by the mayor.
Resolution number forty-two dash twenty-two, a resolution to declare the dilapidated structure located at six oh four Iowa Street Southwest, to remedy the nuisance and to order the removal of same pursuant to the procedure outlined in ordinance number fourteen eighty-four.
Your turn, your turn. What's the number? Move, seconded and properly seconded, ready for discussion on resolution number forty-two twenty-two? Those in favor, this vote is on aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, this vote is on a nay. Ayes have it on resolution forty-two twenty-two. Resolution number forty-three twenty-two is also introduced by the mayor.
Resolution number forty-three twenty-two, a resolution to declare the dilapidated structure located at six eleven D, the Road Street, to remedy the nuisance and to order the removal of same pursuant to the procedure outlined in ordinance number fourteen eighty-four.
The motion approved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and properly seconded, are ready for discussion on resolution number forty-three twenty-two? If there is none, those in favor, use vote inside of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, use the vote inside of nay. Ayes have it on resolution number forty-three twenty-two. Resolution number forty-four twenty-two is also introduced by the mayor.
Resolution number forty-four twenty-two, a resolution of the city council of the city of Camden, Arkansas, amending the twenty twenty-two annual operating budget and for other purposes.
Motion, make the motion to approve.
Seconded.
It's been moved and properly seconded, we're ready for discussion on resolution number forty-four twenty-two?
Um, this is what we, uh, had a couple of workshops about and, um, about this.
So, so this resolution doesn't change anything we've done, it's just, it's just reciting what the council already done. So basically we're not changing anything, but since we had had three resolutions dealing with the American Rescue Recovery Funds, uh, it just kind of went back over them and said we had an initial, uh, resolution where we approved the water tank renovation and the Public Works Department and the structural repairs. Then we came back and had another resolution, uh, nine twenty-two, where we, uh, approved fifteen thousand for LED lighting and the gas generator. We ended up coming back and passed the resolution thirty-six twenty-two, which really, uh, reimbursed the city the full amount that we received so far for, uh, police and fire expenses. And so that left us with all the funds as a surplus and already distributed and we're just reaffirming what we've already done, that's what we've already approved. Uh, so before we moved on to any other ones, I wanted to be sure that, uh, we had a good resolution that's just, uh, restating what was approved, what we've already approved to come out of that one point one billion dollar.
Let me ask the question. I, I got to wondering as we were talking about this and thinking about the other resolutions involved that are coming up. And I went back and we did a thing, we passed resolution thirty-six twenty-two, I think in June. Basically dealing, because we got that one point one billion dollars in twenty twenty-one. And in June, we passed, well, once we found out how we'd use the funds, we split that money to use it for the fire police salaries and compensation. So it's, I, I'm taking, we've already used that money. We did five hundred fifty thousand dollars apiece for their salaries and benefits and I'm trying to think, well, wait a minute. Now that-
Now that, of course, that, that freed up money to carry into our reserve funds, but we, we can't take it out of the rescue money again.
No, and that's what, that, that's what this is saying. So the rescue recovery money was used solely for salaries. So solely for salaries is where the rescue recovery money went. That left us with one point one, that was placed in a separate subaccount. So it's segregated so that we can track it, but it's no longer recovery funds, it's really the surplus funds.
Okay.
So, so recovery, our recovery funds themselves.
Really calling, okay, yes.
Is there any more discussion on resolution forty-four twenty-two?
Yeah.
Those in favor use voting sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed use voting sign of nay. Ayes have it on resolution forty-four twenty-two. May also introduce this resolution number forty-five twenty-two.
Resolution number forty-five twenty-two, a resolution of the city council of the city of Camden, Arkansas, amending the twenty twenty-two annual operating budget, authorizing disbursement of funds to O P E D and for other purposes.
Motion to approve.
Is it moved and properly seconded? Are ready for discussion? Well, just a question, um, this is, um, rescue money as well, and we done gave them the hundred thousand, right? And giving them fifty-five out of the rescue.
Yes, other than I, I would say, it, it's no longer rescue funds. So, so really, the rescue funds were used just for the salaries. So all that was, all that replaced or replenished our budget. And basically was to, uh, offset any lost revenue. We used that to pay the salaries. That left us with one point one surplus, which is only there as a result of the recovery funds. It's just the recovery funds themselves. So we've got a one point one, uh, surplus that we are able to, uh, spend. And we're keeping it separate just so that it is able to, uh, so you know where it's coming from.
And, and let me say, I think that the simple way that, that I look at this is, we're saying we're gonna take a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, put that over in the dedicated economic development fund, but we're gonna authorize spending to O P E D, the fifty-five thousand dollars, so that the county will match it, and they'll, they'll get a hundred and ten.
Yeah. They not, are they not gonna get the check? They're not gonna get the fifty-five thousand? It's gonna?
Yes, no, so, well, the way the resolution is right now, under operating part of section one, we're moving a hundred and fifty-five from the subaccount eleven eleven eighth. Okay, that's kind of where we have this surplus, the one point one million sitting. That's gonna go to the economic development fund in the budget, adding a hundred and fifty-five. And then section, uh, section two is releasing fifty-five of that to O P E D. So O P E D hits fifty-five, but we're gonna have an extra hundred still in the budget, but it has not been released.
So, so next year's budget, well, that fund will have an extra hundred grand in, instead of going down a hundred grand, it actually go back up.
Or whenever the council wants to release.
So, so, so it's gonna be a hundred and fifty-five thousand annually?
No.
No, this, this a hundred and fifty-five out of that one point one. This is just a one-time transfer into economic development.
Okay.
Right, this, that's all this is.
All right. And, uh, Ju- Judge McAdoo and I, I did have that discussion, and we discussed the fact that the county gets three point, Camden get one point seven five, and point seven five, that is already earmarked. And so we get different amounts, but he will only do the hundred and fifty-five thousand if the city matches.
Matches.
His hundred and fifty-five thousand. But I told him, we don't, we don't get the same amount, we don't get the same kind of money. But he want, but that was the way he said. So, is there any more discussion on resolution forty-five twenty-two? Those in favor use voting sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed use voting sign of nay. Ayes have on resolution forty-five twenty-two. Resolution forty-six twenty-two introduced by the mayor.
Resolution number forty-six twenty-two, a resolution of the city council of the city of Camden, Arkansas, authorizing salary increases, amending the twenty twenty-two operating budget and for other purposes.
The motion for resolution forty-six twenty-two, make the motion to approve.
Second.
Is it moved and properly seconded? I'm sorry. Has been moved and properly seconded? Seconded, is, is there any discussion on resolution forty-six twenty-two?
Yes.
Yes.
And let me just say about this, I had a hand in drafting this, but I wish there was a better way to do it, but I don't know, I couldn't come up with one in the time I had to work with. Uh, everybody knows the, what inflation is doing to everybody's pocketbook. But the people, it reminds me, the people at the lower end, at the, at the lower end of the base scale, are the ones that have the least discretion in groceries and gas and rent and things that are going on. And I, I actually wanted to stretch it where we could have a, a pay raise that would take effect in July going forward for the year, and have, be able to come up with a bonus pay incentive, and I'm gonna call it a service award to term it that way, uh, for the hours they work for the first six months of the year. Uh, that's got a little more complicated than I could break it down, but anyway, I, I basically, in, in looking, I took our twenty twenty-two budget on the, uh, salary charts. So we have the, we don't have names, we have the positions and grades for Eastern Park. And looked at the ones, the annual salary for this group ought to be twenty-five or less, these were twenty-five, thirty-five. And it seemed like there's a kind of a natural break in there, and I said, well, the twenty-five and below need to get the, the biggest bonus or, or pay raises. The twenty-five, thirty-five, the next, and up thirty-five, forty-five, a little bit more. And I, I wish it was more, that's all I knew to do. So this number reflects, uh, that based on just their, their regular, regular salary, uh, that wouldn't include overtime, that is what was in the budget. And I'm gonna say it's, it's pretty accurate, we broke it down for Eastern Park.
So. I wanna say, um, thank you, because this was, uh, this is a little bit out of my wheelhouse, but we were working, when we got ready to do the pool, we had people working out of class, doing all kinds of stuff. And it's gonna, it's a hundred degrees in the shade. And as you said, some of the people that we would, I, I don't know how to term it, but say some of the people who are getting paid a lesser amount at the lower rung. Like you said, they don't have the option that some of us have of, of a plan B. And we wanted to honor that, because we have some money, we have some, we'll go to the surplus sitting there, we don't wanna spend everything. So we had to make some real hard choices, and so he's helped me to work with Ms., uh, with the clerk and the treasurer to make sure that these were numbers that our city could handle to help move, yes.
And let me say, uh, uh, two other things. One, uh, this part is just, the, the, what we're budgeting here totals to fifty thousand eight hundred eighty dollars. That's just for six months, that's for half a year. So when we put these pay raises in there, on an annual basis next year, it'll be tw- double that, basically. And, you know, we'll tinker with that and become budgeted that. Secondly, I need to make a motion to make an amendment. And in section four, at the end of that line, it says firefighter, say, sworn officers, certified firefighters, and district court employees, and aldermen. And aldermen are not included in this raise.
Yes, sir. I actually wanna say, and, uh, elected officials.
Well, I don't, none of them are in, in those categories, I don't think.
Well, you can't say they're elected officials.
Yeah, I would point it out.
Well, we are elected officials.
Right.
But I, I think all the, uh, the, the other elected officials, I think, are above the, the rate there. And maybe I'm wrong.
It just says only fifty.
Probably be better to say all elected, that way it's, it's clear.
Okay.
If, if that's, yeah, I mean, I think.
Okay, all elected officials.
Yeah, but, but, but that's not true though, right? I mean.
Well, he's, he's giving an amendment, let's find out what the amendment is truly is.
Well, I'm talking about the clerk, I mean, she's included in that, so.
Let me look at my grid.
Clerk's not an employee, unless the council wants to adjust them. Elected officials can be termed separate.
That's, that, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, she's elected official, right?
Right.
She's elected official, she's included. I'm just trying to get it clear. Yeah.
I think as it's written right now, elected officials are not included.
Right.
Are not included.
Because we're just considered employees.
Correct. And it doesn't hurt to put that in there so everyone knows on the front end that, that the employee is not elected official. So in my mind, I don't think this includes elected officials.
Yeah, I'm not sure how to have that.
Whatever the intent is, the question is, what does the council want to do?
I, I, I'm trying to find the specifics in, and when you say elected official, that pulled that, that pulled that curtain.
Yeah.
I'm just saying be specific. If it's all, okay, with, all right, problem. But we gotta be specific. Because just that word draws her.
Well, that, okay, well, I'd say let's just exclude it. It's, it's the guys out there sweating is the ones I was really shooting for. So, I don't, I, I, the only simple way I know to do it is say, all elected officials. I knew I accidentally left alderman out, but. Say all elected officials.
Yeah, I, I did not take that to be the, to be the meaning, it's good to have it clearer. But I think the whole word ended up beginning with employees, that is not dealing with elected officials anyway, but.
But you know, we get a W two just like the other, so we're on a payroll report, so.
So we'll take section four, think we just add section four, uh, elected officials to the very beginning, and just say elected officials, comma, sworn police officer, certified firefighter, and district court employees are not.
Okay.
Does that work for your motion?
Yes.
Or maybe? And Lindsey made, Lindsey made the amendment, so is there anybody to?
Uh, the amendment to resolution forty-six twenty-two has been made. Is entered discussion about the amendment to forty-six twenty-two. Though, those in favor of amending forty-six twenty-two to include elected officials in section four, those in favor use voting sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed use voting sign of nay. Ayes have it on the amendment. Now we have before as resolution forty-six twenty-two amended. Like to make the motion to approve as amended?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, are ready for discussion? Those in favor use voting sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed use voting sign of nay. Ayes have it on resolution forty-six twenty-two. Resolution number forty-seven twenty-two introduced by the mayor.
Resolution number forty-seven twenty-two, a resolution of the city council of the city of Camden, Arkansas, amending the twenty twenty-two annual operating budget, authorizing disbursement of funds for repairs and for other purposes.
All right. Is there motion? Make the motion to approve. Is it moved and?
Second. I'm going seconded, so we're discussing.
Move, it's taken by the court.
It was moved and properly seconded. Uh, let's, uh, go ahead and do discussion. If you will.
First question.
Court, what are we looking at here?
This is, these are different issues we have in that city hall, and some of the buildings that are listed here. So you can see for yourself, we're in an old, we're in an old building, and we have some issues in some of these different buildings, and we're seeking to repair the buildings that we're in. Would you mind coming to, uh, discuss, you have a specific question? These are not numbered.
No, they, they weren't, they're not itemized here, I'm just looking at a picture, okay? Uh, that particular, first page, that first page is at, uh, Public Works. Okay. That's in the office part of Public Works. You know, we had, we had a storm that, uh, tore down the garage roof, okay? The, the front part, the office part, didn't get any damage. Okay, so there was no repair to make to the front part of Public Works, okay? So now, this is a, this is the men's bathroom, okay? First half page that you got there.
Excuse me, Dr. Wood.
Yes, sir.
These are current pictures?
Current, as current as today.
And this is the men's bathroom?
Yes, sir.
At Public Works.
So, so, so what are they using the bathroom at?
There's another.
Big up the bowels.
Okay, okay.
And so what we're trying to do is, is kind of make things convenient. If we don't have these buildings, they need to be worked. And we have leaks in the pub, there is buckets in places in some of the buildings, not just at Public Works, but at the incubator, at the fifty-five gallon barrel, at the incubator in the, in conference room. And then leaking a while, uh, you'll see pictures of ceiling tile, painting, you'll see pictures of stains and light fixtures. And all of this, all of this is roof, uh, roof damage. Most of it, most of these pictures are at Public Works. I didn't, I didn't include any of the pictures of the municipal building. We've got about a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and twenty, uh, square foot of space that we can't use to cause a, a damage, by, by, back here in the corner. We need, we need space for records. We need space for maps. And we've got about a hundred and twenty per square foot, if we had that repaired, we could at least put records in there. Uh, some of the public works, ceiling pictures, you see wires, you see, uh, you see holes in the, in the roof system, uh, insulation, I mean, uh, I was talking to some of the guys, and they said, in this part right here, it, I mean, it actually boils down like it's a waterfall. Yes, sir.
This, this picture of the A C duct system that seems to be broken, where is that at?
That's at the incubator. It's at the warehouse, and the roof has leaked around that joint that caused that tape.
Mr. Wood?
Yes, sir.
Is every, uh, available space in this building being utilized?
That can be. Yes, sir.
The answer is no for now, but it's not.
Right.
The ones that can be used are being utilized.
Right.
But the reason we're asking for these monies, uh, to be, uh, useful is because we wanna fix the areas that can't be used. We're going to the restroom, straight down the hall, over in the corner.
Yes, sir.
There's a room right behind that restroom. Uh, we're having some leakage, uh, coming where, uh, tree walls over there, we have leakage coming into the building over there.
From the front office where Brandon sits. We've got, we've got a mobile home that we got the records. Tree fell in, roof busted, well, we put a tarp over it, s- steps. You, I, I wouldn't wanna even try to move the steps, you blow them, they're probably falling. But, uh, we either need to get rid of that mobile home, get us a, get this, I gotta ask them for about thirteen thousand to put a metal roof on the mobile home. So we either need to get rid of it, put us, get us a big, get us a big storage container that we can put our records in, we don't have no heat and air in that building, and we, uh, we can get the same usage out of the storage container. And, uh, uh, twenty-foot storage container, uh, about three thousand dollars. And we had a mobile home, female trailer they call them, had one out at, uh, at the landfill, sanitation.